Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address, please?
Andrew Malguinara, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson. I'm the agent.
Okay, and what is the agency that...
Brookhaven Expeditors.
Thank you. You here on just pool equipment, side yard variance?
Yes.
All right, any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
All in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Application number 590-25, Jessica Barry and Alexander White, trustees of the White Family Trust. Permission to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to ISLEPTOWN CODE SECTION 68-419.1. Residence AA District, northwest corner of Don Lane and Jane Road, Hop Dog.
Good evening, Denise Trefaro, DTT Design, 1165 Broadway Avenue, Holbrook. We're here tonight asking for a two-family, family use for the property. It's not going to require any other variances at all. We're staying within the zoning limits for the addition and the apartment.
We have the paperwork in the file for the parents based on their age, okay? Any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
No planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application for a period of three years.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Everyone else in favor? I'm in favor, okay. Application's granted.
We're so in favor of it.
Thank you.
I didn't hear anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Application number 591-25, Barbara Seabor, Family Trust. Permission to leave shed having side yard of 3.5 feet instead of required 4 feet. Patio on side property line not having required setback of 4 feet. And patio having side yard of 1 foot instead of required 4 feet. Residence B District, south side of Udalia Road, 75 feet east of Farm Lane, West Islip.
Hi, Darren Seabor, 64 Udalia Road, West Islip.
You here on the side yards for the shed and the patio?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Application's granted, thank you.
He's fresh.
Thank you for waiting me up.
Thank you, Darren.
Some people are hardy, yeah.
Application number 592-25, Rodney and Christine Nebecat. Permission to leave driveway on side property line not having required setback of 4 feet. Residence AA District, west side of Edgewater Avenue, 1,774.84 feet south of Middle Road, Bayport.
Good evening, Christine Fay, Accurate Expediting for the homeowner.
Are you just here on the driveway side yard?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No questions.
No planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please. Second, please, all in favor? Aye. Application's granted.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 593-25, Jonathan and Alexis Dillon. Permission to leave patio is having side yard of 0.2 feet and 0.1 feet. And driveway on side property line not having required setback of 4 feet each. Residence A District, west side of Norma Avenue, 300 feet south of Bellmore Street, West Islip.
How you doing, John Dillon at 248 Norma Ave, West Islip.
Okay, and you here on the side yard for the patio and driveway?
Yes.
All right, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? Okay, I'll take a motion, please. All in favor? Aye. Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 594-25, Scott and Dana Embry. Permission to leave second story addition having side yard of 13.5 feet instead of required 14 feet. And driveway having side yard of 3.3 feet instead of required 4 feet. Residence A District, south side of Fairway Court, 150 feet west of Bradish Lane, Bayshore.
Hello?
Good evening, Scott Embry. 14 Fairway Court.
Thank you. And you here on the, you got a second story addition and the driveway?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board? No questions. No questions. Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please. Take a motion to approve the application. Second, all in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thanks, guys.
Application number 595-25, Roseanne and Boyce Wellmaker. Permission to leave pond having side yard of 3.2 feet instead of required 10 feet. Residence AA District, south side of Palermo Street, 350 feet east of Connequod Avenue, Central Islip.
Hi, Roseanne Wellmaker, 130 Palermo Street, Central Islip. I'm requesting that the pond that was there when we moved in, we never knew from the title company that it was not the required distance. And as you see, I dropped off a new survey today and it's actually 5 feet, give or take, at the smallest section. I brought some actual pictures of the cloy, if you needed to see them at all. Most of them are over 12 inches, some of them up to 18 inches. And it would be detrimental to them to move them, even temporarily to move the pond. So I request that we leave it the way it is.
No, that's...
And there's an affidavit from my neighbor who's the only one that joins the pond with her approval of us leaving it where it is along her fence line.
So we can amend the call of the meeting if the board's okay with it. The new survey dropped off today indicates that the pond is 5 feet from the side property line.
Application to move, to amend it to 5 feet. Do you get a second? All in favor? The meeting address now is 5 feet instead of required 10 feet. Any other questions from the board? No questions. Planning, any comments?
A couple of comments. I believe it should read 5 instead of 18 would be technically correct. I know I spoke with this... Mary Wright?
Yeah.
That was... Yeah. The reason why, it gets regulated as a pool when it's more than 150 square feet. I think this is kind of silly in this case. It's trying to prevent people from classifying things as ponds or fountains where they could swim in it. You clearly could not reasonably swim in this unless you're a fish, so... Yes, it's 5 instead of 18. No, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
Okay, further amendment? He's saying that...
Yes, instead of 18, instead of required 18.
Yeah, so further amendment.
So I'll make that further, I'll make that application for a further amendment instead of the required 18 feet. Do you get a second, please? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so now we're dealing with 5 instead of 18. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter?
Thank you.
All right. No questions, I'll take a motion, please. See, aye?
Motion to approve the application, second.
All in favor? Aye. Application's granted.
Thank you, good night.
As amended.
So it'll read... Okay, don't worry. Application number 596-25, Thomas and Mary Donovan. Permission to leave shed number one with roof over having 5 feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required 20 feet. Shed number two having side yard of 1.8 feet instead of required 4 feet. Pond having side yard of 3.5 feet instead of required 4 feet. And deck having side yard of 1.2 feet instead of required 4 feet. Residence B District, south side of Edmore Lane North, 45.11 feet east of Everdale Avenue, West Islip.
Thomas and Mary Donovan, 63 Edmore Lane North, West Islip, New York.
All right, planning, I'll go to you first. Any comments on this?
The only thing that really would stand out here would be the shed behind the front line. I am somewhat sympathetic to it because of the shape of this lot. They have a rear yard that narrows down a lot. So I can kind of understand them wanting to put it on the side of their house rather than in the rear where they already have a lack of space. And really, that's my only comment on it.
Okay, any questions from the board? No question, no?
My question, I didn't get, is that a yea or a nay out in there? I heard you said...
Generally, I would say that I am in support of it because of the shape of the lot.
All right, as long as we can delineate for the next 3,000 of these that come up. No more sheds.
No more sheds, right. Is that fair?
Yes.
All right, anybody else like to be heard in this matter? All right, then I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application with the notation addressed.
Do you get a second, please? Second. Second, all in favor? Aye. Application's granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Do the unusual shape of the lot. Application number 597-25, Enricetta Scandieri and Schgelsen Rodoni. Permission to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to ISLEPTOWN CODE SECTION 68-419.1. To leave shed having front yard of 8 feet instead of required 20 feet. And 10 feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required 20 feet. 6-foot fence on property line not having required setback of 10 feet. And 6-foot fence in both driveway and corner sight distance triangles exceeding permitted height of 3 feet. Residence B District, southeast corner of McKinley and Jefferson Avenue, Brentwood.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. Okay, so we are here tonight to establish a two-family, family use only. It is for the owner and her mother. And it is based on age and we did provide the required documentation. We're also here for a shed in the second front yard. I did speak to the property owner and they are willing to relocate that shed to a conforming location. And then we have the two fences. So we have spoken to them about cutting down the fence that's in the driveway in their corner sight triangle as well. However, the only fence that they were hoping to gain some clarification on was on the second front. It is on the edge of the pavement, but there is a lot of town property there before the actual roadway. So that fence, they would like to remain, if possible.
Okay, so just back to the shed real quick. We're going to strike then, leave shed having front yard of 8? That's the shed we're going to remove?
Yeah, all the way through.
Right? All right, so I'll make a motion to strike from the call. Leave shed having front yard of 8 feet instead of required 20 feet. And 10 feet behind front line of dwelling instead of required 20 feet. All in favor? Aye. That's been removed from the call.
The 6-foot fence on the west side of the property, what was the extenuating circumstances? I didn't hear how it was in the law. Or was that the extenuating circumstances?
So even though it is on the property line, there is...
That's not good, start off.
There is a significant amount of town property between the fence and the roadway.
What's significant? What number is significant these days?
So it's kind of on a sliding scale towards the front of the property. It has almost the 10 feet, but then as you get to the rear of the property, it does kind of taper inwards.
But it tapers right onto the property line, doesn't it?
Planning, any comments on this?
With regards to the second front yard fence, if I'm not mistaken, the way I'm currently looking at it, and it's currently over their property line encroaching into the right-of-way.
They will be bringing it to their property line should the board grant the relief.
I think they're going to be bringing it a little further.
I mean, I guess that's kind of what my thought process is. If they're already moving it, why not just move it to conform?
I understand.
Because I don't really think that there's too much of a justification for it in this case. They're not particularly close to meeting the exception. They're almost 20,000 square feet lot.
What about the other fences?
Oh, it's a big lot. Should they be going to cut that down?
The other fence is right next to the driveway and they are going to taper that down to conform to the code.
Okay, so we can remove that from the call?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to strike this reference to 6-foot fence in both driveway and corner sight distance triangles exceeding permitted height of 3 feet. All in favor? Aye. That's struck. Okay, we do have the paperwork for the two-family use, that's fine. And the question, is anyone else here on this application? So now we're going to deal with the 6-foot fence on the property line. We can bring that in the whole way?
Yes. They're either going to bring it in or cut it down to 4. I've explained their options to them.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we strike 6-foot fence on property line not having required setback of 10 feet.
She's applied for that or we just deny it?
Well, now it's struck from the application, so... All in favor? So now we've got, the call is basically permission to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to ISLEPTOWN CODE 68-419.1. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Do you make a motion? I'm motion to grant the two-family, two-family use only for a period of three years and to deny the 6-foot fence on property line.
Everything else is sort of...
So motion to grant the two-family for a period of three years.
Do you get a second, please? What's your question?
No, no, no.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Aye. Application's been granted as amended.
Application number 598-25, Jessica Schneider. Permission to erect second story addition 28.1 by 24.2. Leaving front yard of 22 feet instead of required 50 feet. Side yard of 8.2 feet instead of required 25 feet. And total side yards of 20.7 feet instead of required 60 feet. Front portico and ramp leaving front yard of 19 feet instead of required 50 feet. Side yard of 8.2 feet instead of required 25 feet. Total side yards of 28.7 feet instead of required 60 feet. And one-story addition 2 by 5 leaving side yard of 7.3 feet instead of required 25 feet. And total side yards of 29.6 feet instead of required 60 feet. Residence AAA District, north side of Woodcrest Drive, 59.96 feet east of Fairview Place, Hop Dog.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. Okay, so this property, along with some others in the neighborhood, were actually initially zoned A back in the 1950s and they were upzoned to AAA in the 60s. Based on that, the couple of properties in the area that had come forth with similar applications were all granted relief. We have basically all the houses on that same side of the road. So in 2010, ZBA 590-10 granted a second story addition and a second front yard of 13.85 instead of the required 50 with a side yard of 5.45 instead of the required 25 feet. As well as some other items on that application. We have another application at 21 Woodcrest, 569-2000. This also granted a second story addition and a front porch leaving a side yard of 9 feet. And a front yard setback of 20 instead of 25. We have the house right next door at 23 Woodcrest under ZBA 460-18 which also granted a side yard of 5 feet instead of the required 25 feet. And one at 27 Woodcrest granting a two-story addition having a side yard of 14 instead of 25. Total side yards of 22.6 instead of the required 50. So as can be seen from these ZBA approvals and the neighborhood itself and due to the upzoning of the area in the 60s, it seems that this type of application, when it does come forth with, before the board, it is deemed to be nature and character of the neighborhood.
Back to planning, any comments?
I would corroborate what she said. You can kind of see it up there. All these houses, this is actually one of the smaller ones, all have the same weird angle. They're all significantly undersized and, yeah, this application is definitely in character with the neighborhood.
Okay, any questions, comments on the board? No, is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Exactly. All in favor? Aye. Application's granted.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 599-25, Joseph and Rosa Croce. Permission to leave detached garage 18.3 by 26.3 having height of 15.23 feet instead of permitted 14 feet. And driveway having side yard of 1.3 feet instead of required 4 feet. Residence AA District, west side of Ivy Hill Road, 482.14 feet south of Locust Avenue, Oakdale.
Good evening, Joseph M. Croce, 29 Ivy Hill Road, Oakdale.
And you're here for the garage height, correct?
Garage height in the driveway was a little...
Right. What can you tell us about the height of the garage?
Well, it was built as per approved drawings. I don't know in between where the architect and the surveyor, but we built it exactly the way it is on the drawings. It was all inspected, approved, and for some reason it came out 13 inches taller.
Hang on a second.
You were granted a permit for that height?
No, no, we were granted a permit for the building. And then the final survey came and it winded up being 13 inches taller than it was supposed to be.
So they, whomever exceeded the permit, the grant of the permit, you've given a permit that had 14 feet and however, it became 13 inches higher.
Built as the specifications on the blueprints.
I know, they did disconnect us that it wasn't. It wasn't.
Well, but we used the same nominal dimensional lumber, the pitch is what they required, so...
You keep saying "they."
Yeah.
"They" can mean a lot of different people.
Yeah.
It can mean whomever. The town said 14 feet.
Yes.
"They," whomever "they" are, didn't build it to 14 feet. Them, and "they" is the one that put you in this position. And unfortunately, because "they" made a mistake, we can't say, eh, it's okay. Then we'd have to throw our code book out the window. And we never ever granted a greater than 14 feet. Not, may not be your fault, it may be their fault, but not the town's.
It's my fault, I built it personally.
Oh, well then you was "they." And "them," "they," "them" is "you," not the town. So you keep saying "they" built it, that's you. It isn't the way I'm putting it.
The plans show 14 feet height.
Correct. Like I said, if it shows an 8-foot stud, a 2-by-10 rafter, a 6 pitch, that's exactly how it was built. Why it came out 13 inches taller than the architect required it, he should have changed the pitch. So it's... I don't know what to do. I'm not going to spend $50,000 and knock it down and rebuild it for 14, so I'm asking you, please. I don't know what other route to go.
We can't, because then we have, everybody can build, exceed a building permit and say, you say, sorry, then our code means nothing, unfortunately.
It's 13 inches.
Yeah, but we have 14 feet for a reason.
So I'm setting a precedence of a slightly higher garage?
No, no, you're not setting a precedent, most likely not being granted. A little bit more, right? We hold these at 14 feet, otherwise our code means nothing.
Okay, so what is it that needs to be done?
14 feet. You built it, I didn't build it.
Yeah.
Change the pitch, maybe change the pitch in the roof.
Okay, so what if that can't happen because it took 12 years to save for the project? I'll be 80 by the time I can save to rip it down and rebuild it? So what do I do moving forward? That's what I'm asking.
There might be something you can do besides actually demolishing it that could make it conform. I would talk with buildings, specifically you should probably talk with zoning. I'd recommend speaking with Denbergos. He might be able to help you in a way where you can keep it by just changing the surroundings without actually affecting the building. There might be a way to do that. It's been done before.
You're saying raise, raise up the...
Effectively, yeah, and sort of a regrading project. Because it's measured from grade.
Yeah, but the problem is, is, I don't know if this is maybe why it came into effect, there's a, an addition approximately 18 feet away from it. So in order to get the proper grade for the pitching, we raised up the foundation so the water didn't dump into the garage and run away.
So I think that sounded a smaller problem than your previous problem of not being able to knock down.
So I don't know if I could build anything up that would trap the water, but I guess, I don't have any choice. I'll have to talk to whoever it is. I'm kind of in a corner right here.
No, I get it.
I built it to where it's...
It's difficult.
Yeah.
It's something that they've tried to work with other people to test on in unfortunate situations like this where, yeah, you did take out a permit, it's unfortunate, it was built and it's came out this way. So I would try and talk with buildings, specifically the zoning department, to see what possible options you have besides demolishing in any capacity.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
Okay, thank you. 13 inches.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this application? He said zoning.
That's who I would recommend speaking to, yes.
Yeah, so you can ask us to amend it toward conformity. So if you were to figure out a regrading plan that changed the average of the four corners of the structure, you could propose to us a lower or a conforming height of the garage, if that works. We can't amend it away from conformity, obviously, we can't make it a greater height for you, but we could accept your request to reduce the height.
Okay.
While it's on reserve, is what I mean.
So zoning, they'll have some sort of an idea of what I could...
They very well might. It's happened in the past and I believe I talked with them about this particular case and they said they...
Yes, if it was 3, 4 feet, I'd say we got a big problem, but it's a foot, so I'm sure we can come up with a plan.
It's very, very uncommon for this board to give much of any relief on height for much of anything.
Yeah.
Usually only like small decimals. We're talking de minimis like 14.2 or 14.3. So it's not specific to your case, but yeah. While it's on reserve, go talk with the building department and look at your options.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And the driveway?
The whole, the whole application's been reserved.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Driveway should be fine.
Application number 600-25, Jonathan Norris and Catherine Beebe. Permission to leave shed number one having 1 foot behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required 20 feet. Shed number two and propane tanks having front yard of 1.7 feet and 10.2 feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required 20 feet each. Sport court having side yard of 2.8 feet instead of required 4 feet. And 6-foot fence on property line not having required setback of 10 feet. Residence B District, southwest corner of Coates Avenue and Beach Street, which is not open, Holbrook.
Good evening, Michelle DeBerta, 126 Norwalk Avenue, Medford, 11763 for the applicant. Goodwill Expediting.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? Before we start, I just wanted to point out two things. One, the sheds are, will be moved. They're small Rubbermaid-type sheds for children's toys and stuff and we'll move them into compliance. The other thing was...
The bolt sheds?
Bolt sheds.
Okay.
The propane tanks are listed on the CFO that was given in 2018. I think maybe it was in error.
Where were they, I mean, where were they when they were on the CFO?
They were on the CFO, but were they listed at that location?
From my understanding from the homeowner, they have not been moved from installation.
Just grant them.
Previously granted that location?
No, they previously were approved by the town is what Mr. DeBerta is saying, but I think that somebody sees it otherwise now, so they're very grantable where they are because of the paper street.
Okay.
So I think that's your best bet.
That's fine, I just wanted to point out that there was a CFO that did have them listed on there. The CFO obviously didn't have the location, but from what I understand, they have not been moved since they were installed.
Well, a CFO for some other structure was issued with them in that location, is what Well, a C of O for some other structure was issued with them in that location, is what she means.
So we have the six-foot fence.
Correct, the six-foot fence along the northern side of the property, along the paper street that's closed. From the location of the paper street, it doesn't look like it would be open for any reason or any time in the near future, although that's obviously a town option.
Yeah, we hit all of the main points there, a lot of these are coming from the unopened road to the north of them, that's the fence, most of these front yard setbacks. And if the shed's being moved, I, I have no issue with this. Yeah.
Thank you, have a good night.
Floor area ratio of thirty-two point seven one percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Leave staircase and entry platform having front yard of twelve point eight feet instead of required twenty-five feet. Patios, onside property lines and driveway onside property line instead of required four feet each, having front yard occupancy of forty-three percent instead of permitted forty percent. Residence B District, south side of Dakota Avenue, seventy-five feet west of Ohio Avenue, Bay Shore.
Good evening, Diana Laspiso with Moreno Expediting Services, P.O. Box thirty-nine, Bethpage, New York, one one seven one four, here on behalf of the applicant. We were before the board back in June, at which point we were requesting, and we still are requesting, that proposed sunroom addition. We asked for it to be held over so that we could look and see if there was any precedent in the neighborhood.
I, I don't think it ever got presented here.
Oh.
Yeah, we started corresponding to try to get the denial accurate, and it never really worked, so here we are.
Oh, okay. Okay, so yeah, so we were not able to find any precedent regarding the second-story sunroom, unfortunately. In regards to the rest of the application, we were before the board as well, the shed from the pre was removed and relocated. In regards to the front stoop and steps, the driveway, both of those were existing prior to him purchasing as far as the footprint. The steps themselves that lead up to the house, this is a high ranch, so the steps themselves were just reconfigured ever so slightly on the older survey, and it went from wood steps up to the front, wood landing to paver, he just replaced it with paver, it's slightly smaller, the steps a little reconfigured. The driveway was previously concrete, but it was in very bad disrepair, so that he replaced with asphalt, but it was similar size from when he purchased the home.
Planning, any comments?
Other than to say that, as she already mentioned, the F A R doesn't really have anything to support it. No, not really, it's a close front yard, but in a case like this with a staircase and entry, they, they need to have reasonable access to their house, and I don't think it's very offensive.
It's very, I don't think it's offensive.
The F A R.
Not offensive. Not offensive.
No, no, the staircase.
The staircase is, the F A R is.
The F A R is offensive.
It's offensive to me to one of our members.
Correct. The F A R, not good, staircase, good.
You're offended by the F A R, highly offended. Shocking.
Okay. And the front yard occupancy, we're fine at forty-three, right?
Yes, we are fine.
Yeah, fine. So the F A R is our, our issue?
I, I understand, unfortunately, he does have to proceed with the application as is, and if the board was going to deny it, it has to be a formal denial for him to get a higher deposit back and get out of the contract with the contractor, being perfectly honest, so that's why I'm here, you could deny it, but we need that in writing so he could get a higher refund back from Four Seasons.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter?
Does she want thirty? Does he want thirty or no?
Does he want thirty percent?
He's not going to be able to comply, we tried to go over the different, he would have had to sacrifice his other balcony, otherwise I was trying to kind of push him that way.
Well, just deny, just get his deposit.
Yeah, yes.
We'll real get it back, and then.
Thank you, though, I appreciate.
Then we can give you less than twenty-five.
I was hoping we could put it on the first floor, but he's, it's not, he's not open to that.
We'll give you eighteen percent.
You, you would like that?
Yeah, well, I want her to get her deposit back. Trying to be kind, okay?
All right, I'll take a motion, please. Take a motion, please. No, he's denied it, just there for you.
All right. I make a motion to deny the portion of the application for floor area ratio and grant that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Portion denied, portion granted.
Thank you.
You got your denial.
Thank you. This is the first time I've ever wanted one, as in expedite.
Well, you got it.
Application number six oh two dash twenty-five, Nicholas and Nicole Spiegler. Permission to erect two-story addition eighteen by thirty point six, leaving side yards of thirteen point eight feet and thirteen point six feet instead of required fourteen feet each, and floor area ratio of thirty percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. And to install basement entrance leaving side yard of eight point nine feet instead of required fourteen feet, all having total side yards of twenty-two point seven feet instead of required twenty-eight feet. To leave shed having side yard of zero point five feet and rear yard of one point nine feet instead of required two feet each, and driveway onside property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence B District, west side of Somerset Avenue, five hundred and twenty-three feet north of Montauk Highway, East Islip.
Do you want a denial too?
No.
Are you sure?
Give it them out.
We'll give you. Like an approval, please. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Thomas Blore, the architect for the project, sixty Carlton Avenue, Suite two oh two, Isle of Terrace, New York, one one seven five two. So yeah, the intent of this application is to construct a two-story rear addition, as well as a basement entrance, and to maintain an existing shed and driveway. I did notice one typo, if I could, I'd like to request to amend the call of the meeting, requesting to leave a shed having a side yard setback of zero point five feet to the correct dimension, which is zero point four feet on the denial. Somehow from the denial to the, um, letter to the neighbors, it went from zero point four to zero point five.
The survey show that?
Correct, yes. Survey denial shows zero point four, and then the notice says zero point five.
Zero point four feet east, oh no, that's, was that four inches?
I think there was an inch decimal thing going on there.
Feet or inches, yeah, that's fine.
Planning, any comments on that? James, you, you agree with those numbers?
I didn't even bother to check.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the survey by islandwide, he gives it in inches.
Exactly, so.
So he gives it, he says it's four inches, so as we know, that's zero point three three, right? Am I right on that, zero point two five? No, zero point three three. And then Tom, on your plot plan, you call it zero point three.
No, the survey from i- islandwide has zero feet dash five inches north.
We go with the same thing?
Uh, not the garage, Mary, the, um, the shed.
Oh, the garage, I'm sorry.
Oh, shit.
Yeah, look in the, um.
It's his fault.
Yeah.
South, southwest corner.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so he went.
Doesn't everybody feel sorry for me with my two-tiered glasses? Oh, five inches.
Yeah, which is zero point four feet.
And this says zero point four.
Ah, got it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to change the call. For the leave shed having side yard of zero point five feet to read zero point four feet. You got a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. So yeah, the side yard setback, we have a thirteen point eight and thirteen point six instead of fourteen, it's pretty minimal, uh, the north side's existing in line with the existing home. The basement entrance, since it's not a fourteen-foot side yard, it's thirteen and change, it's not a permitted encroachment, but if it, you know, was five inches off, it would be a permitted encroachment up to eight feet, so the basement entrance, we're requesting eight point nine. The total side yards is only to the basement entrance, basement entrance is low to the ground, no roof over it, which is twenty-two point seven, but the main dwelling, the total side yards is, are twenty-seven point four, so just shy of the twenty-eight. The sheds, it's unique behind the house, if you see it, there's actually a, kind of like a through-lot driveway that leads to two homes that were older homes, so the shed's really just a budding a driveway. And then the, our request for our driveway, it does not drain towards the neighbor's property, we have grass to the right of it, and on his property, he has kind of a raised planter buffer, so no drainage or runoff flows over to the neighbor's property. And then lastly, the F A R is thirty percent, we're requesting instead of twenty-five.
Any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
I have nothing to add.
No?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please. East Islip.
Okay.
As amended, we did it, the amendment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to grant as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application to grant it as amended.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Application number six oh three dash twenty-five, Krista Elefante. Permission to reconstruct second-story addition twenty-eight point seven by thirty-two point six, leaving front yard of thirty-four point seven feet instead of required forty feet, side yard of twelve point eight feet instead of required fourteen feet. One-story addition, three by eight point six, leaving front yard of thirty-one point seven feet instead of required forty feet, and roofed-over entrance leaving front yard of twenty-eight point seven feet instead of required forty feet, all having floor area ratio of twenty-six point one eight percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Residence A District, north side of Bay Third Street, three hundred feet east of South Bay Avenue, Islip.
Good evening, Krista Elefante, thirteen Bay Third Street, Islip.
Okay, so we hear, we got a few things here, um, planning, what are your comments on this?
This looks like a lot, but this is a Residence A Zone area with a, specifically on this, um, this street, Bay Third Street. Every single one of these lots is more size for Residence B, so the requests here are, they seem like a lot, but given the nature and character of the neighborhood and several other grants by this board, this actually is fine.
So we're just curious, have you seen your prior approval from twenty twenty, you decided not to go with that addition?
Life happened. It was, um, you know, during COVID, and we had a couple of things going on, in terms of the size, we weren't able to sort out what we needed, I'm sorry, we weren't able to accomplish what we needed to with, with the approval that we had forgiven. We did not, no.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter?
Thank you.
Application number six oh four dash twenty-five, Thomas and Sarah Zachman. Permission to reconstruct, reconstruct front vestibule, leaving front yard of eight feet instead of required twenty-five feet. To erect second-story addition, leaving front yard of fourteen point four feet instead of required twenty-five feet, and side yard of eleven point six feet and eight point nine feet instead of required fourteen feet each. Total side yards of twenty point five feet instead of required twenty-eight feet, and floor area ratio of thirty-three point three four percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Residence B District, east side of McCall Avenue, one hundred and seven point five feet south of Sixth Street, West Islip.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself in this matter. Okay, so be it. You're accused now.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the applicant, my name is John Farrell, I'm with the firm of San Ward Brav Koshagnano. Our offices are at thirteen hundred Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite one hundred, Hop Dog, New York. The subject property is located on the east side of McCall, one hundred six, seven point five feet, uh, south of Sixth Street or Bartollier Street. The lot is forty-two feet wide, forty-two and a half feet wide, and a hundred feet deep, uh, for a total of four thousand two hundred fifty square feet of total lot area. It's presently improved with a one, a two-story, single-family dwelling that was constructed in around nineteen thirty. I have some aerial photographs, uh, from the Suffolk G I S viewer. This is like one of the few houses that was in the area in nineteen forty-seven, so it's a very old structure and, and it's, it was existing before many of the houses in the surrounding community. We're here this evening seeking variances for, to add a small, uh, second-story addition to the front of the dwelling. Right now, the second story is, is set back, uh, from the front portion of the dwelling. I have some photos, uh, from Google Street View, which were taken back, uh, in September, and you can see, uh, the front portion of the house where we want to construct the addition. So if you look at that, uh, photo from the, from the Google Street View, you'll see, um, a small portion of black, uh, roof shingles in the front of the house, that's where the addition's going to go. It, it's not going past that area, it's not going as far out as the portico, it's just going right to the, uh, right to, just before the, the portico hits there. So, since we're staying within the existing footprint, the only real relief we're seeking tonight is the additional F A R as part of this variance, which, uh, we're seeking an increase to thirty-three point three four percent. The purpose of the addition is to add two small bedrooms and a bathroom. My clients have a, a nine-year-old, and they recently had a baby, so they have a newborn and a nine-year-old, their family is growing, and as I'm sure the board can appreciate, um, you know, upgrading from your starter home isn't very easy these days, uh, with the real estate market the way it is. So the only way they can really, uh, provide more space for their family is to expand the existing home. The existing footprint. They're just, yeah, so the, if. They're expanding out from, so if you look at the, the picture of the house, the, the second-story addition is set back, the second story is set back from the front. They're basically looking to put the addition on the front portion of the house.
And would it, would it extend further than the portico?
No, it's not extending further than the portico.
Well, I'm sorry, I take that back, so where the portico, you know, I don't know the regular, no longer is flat, that's how it starts to go down.
Yeah.
Going that far out?
No, it is just going to the front wall of the existing dwelling. Sure. Well, I, I think. Well, we're not going, that portion, the addition portion of the house is not going to eight feet. We're just reconfiguring the, the portico, which is eight feet. What they're doing is they're, so, once we bring the, once we bring the addition forward, it's an architectural thing, so once we bring the addition forward, the portico is going to look odd, so they're going to re, redo the, the, the roof line for the portico, to make it flatter. So, um, yeah, so just to touch on the surrounding community, uh, if you look at, at the houses in the area, there are a few houses in the area that are, a few properties in the area that are as small as my client's. You have to appreciate, a four thousand two hundred fifty square foot lot doesn't really provide for a lot of F A R at, at twenty-five percent. My client's footprint is only seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. There's a house on Hyman Avenue, uh, actually, it's five twenty-four Hyman Avenue, you can see it in the aerial photo up there. That house has a twelve, over a twelve-hundred square foot footprint, and it's a high ranch, so it's about twenty. Yes. So in twenty twenty-two, uh, this board, uh, granted on Mr. Wexler's motion, uh, thirty-three percent for a house located at two eighteen Hyman Avenue. Four five eight of twenty-two, I can hand up a copy of the decision to the board? There's, there are no findings of fact, you granted it to the, to the thirty-three percent. Mr. Lorenzo was the chairman at that time. I can also point to, uh, what's the other one? Hello? I am aware of the prior decision on that subject, on this property, um, but it, it's a little, it's a little strange, because at that time, the board said, we're not going to give you more than the thirty, we're not going to give you more than thirty percent, because there's no other precedent in the area. And then the board proceeded to grant a number of variances in the surrounding area in excess of thirty percent. So I'm not sure why at that time the board wasn't willing to go above the thirty percent, but I can tell you that there are several examples of thirty-two and thirty-three percent that have been granted by the board since that denial. I won't tell the supervisor. At fourteen point four, uh, it, it could be just the difference of a measurement on the surveyor. What I'm telling you is that we are staying within the footprint, what we have on the property now is all CO'd. All I can tell you is, what is at the property now has a certificate of occupancy, and we are not expanding beyond that footprint. You can look at the, the sets of, the set of floor plans that we provided, and you can see that the addition is not going beyond the existing floor. Yep. That's, well, there's one, there's, that's one thirty-three, uh, I have. Hold on. I have. I have on case number seven forty-eight of oh five, the board granted thirty-two percent. On let's see, case number two ninety-two of two thousand and eleven, the board granted thirty-three point four four percent. Case number three thirty-five of two thousand and nine, the board granted forty-six percent. And they granted it after the addition was already done on the home and they granted forty-six percent. And six ninety of oh three, the board granted thirty-five point eight percent. And four eighty-four of twelve, the board granted thirty-three percent, so. Four eighty-four of twelve. Three thirty-five of oh nine. I think I already handed up four fifty-eight. Yep, and there's one missing, hold on. I don't have four eighty-four, I guess, I don't know what happened to that one. Oh wait, I do have four eighty-four. Four eighty-four. Six twenty Three thirty-five of oh nine. Eight of twenty-two. And six ninety, I don't have six ninety of oh three. Yeah, I have I, I just think that, you know, with a lot of, of this, this small lot, right? If the purpose of, of an FAR is to prevent the overdevelopment of properties, the expansion of what they call McMansions, I, I think this property stands out as the exception to, to, to the rule on FAR. We have a seven hundred and twenty-two square foot footprint. We're looking to go to fourteen hundred and seventeen square feet total. That is not a big house by any standards. It is not an overdeveloped lot. We only have sixteen percent lot coverage on this property. So eighty percent of the lot is open space. It, it's, the, the house at five twenty-four Hyman Avenue covers much more of the lot than we do and it has much more floor area than we do. And it's right around the corner. But they just got here first, I guess, or they got here before the code was enacted and they built that house. But again, it's the character of the community as it's developed. It's not the character of the community according to the zoning code. Yeah, they built the house before the FAR restriction was put in place. Five twenty-four Hyman is the, is, yeah. I understand that, but you can amend the code, but the point of a zoning board is to look at the character of the community as it exists. If you guys were just supposed to apply the, the zoning code, then there would be no reason to have, have a zoning board. You'd just say, it's, it doesn't comply with the code, you can't do it. Exactly, exactly, that's why I'm saying you need to stand up for your job and, and grant this variance. I can't, I can't, I don't have that much power, I'm sorry.
I have several comments on this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take both sides of this argument in this, so bear with me. To start with, as far as most of the precedents cited, I, I don't think most of them would be normally considered by the board. For instance, this one I'm looking at right here for two eighteen Hyman is, I think, over a thousand feet away from the subject parcel. It's not in the normal radius the board would consider. A few of the other ones that were cited, it's always a complication that we had a pretty significant change to FAR code in around twenty-eleven, where we stopped counting accessory structures under five hundred feet. So a lot of things that get granted, for instance, thirty-three in twenty-eleven, two thousand and nine, do so. And then if you dig a bit deeper, you'd realize, oh, the house itself, if it were based on current zoning standards, would be about twenty-five, twenty-seven because the garage was giving them an extra six percent, that wouldn't be the case anymore. So I, I disagree with him that the precedent really supports this. I tend to agree with him on pretty much everything else he's said, though, with regards to especially the difficulties posed by this particular lot and the history of this neighborhood. This is, it's a very old house. Forty-two fifty is a very difficult lot to work with. This is well below standard for the zoning category of our lowest zoning category. So what we're actually looking at here, I think they're currently at something like twenty-six or twenty-seven percent FAR. They're asking for about seven percent and that's equivalent to slightly under three hundred total square feet. If the board were to do their normal thing of keeping them to thirty, that would take about half of the addition away, probably not a feasible project anymore. And that would be a difference of about a hundred and fifty square feet. I think from my perspective, the difficulty of a lot and the fact that there are a few other lots like this in the neighborhood, although several of their neighbors have significantly larger lots and even if this were to be granted, they would still have larger houses on those lots than these people would have. So I am sympathetic to the fact that they have a difficult lot to work with and the house that they're proposing, to my mind, is not very large, nor is the addition they are proposing. So yeah, that is my two sides of the argument.
No, I just love to get an approval. I figured as much. Thank you, have a good evening.
Application number six oh five dash twenty-five, Alexander and Kimberly Quinn. Permission to erect second story and two-story additions, leaving front yard of thirty-two point one feet instead of required forty feet and to leave platform and patio on side property line not having required setback of four feet each. Residence A District, east side of Gardner Drive, eight hundred and eighty-six point seven two feet south of Seventh Street, Bay Shore.
Good evening, I'm Michael Dunn, the architect at two fifty-six Orinoco Drive in Bright Waters, New York, one one seven one eight. Okay, thank you, thank you. So the Quins recently bought the house and they are planning a two-story addition to expand that split level, it's a front-to-back split level with a tiny kitchen and three young kids, they need some more room. So we were asking for thirty-two point one instead of forty in that zone A. Some of the setbacks, if they have the width, they are thirty-foot and I do have a few precedents for you to support the application. Right down the street is nine thirty-nine Manor is at thirty-foot setback. And I have nine fifty-nine Manor as well as a two-story addition with a similar thirty-foot setback. And we just did one a few years back at nine forty-four Thompson, which was at thirty-two feet. So we have four similar cases in that area.
Yeah, I talked with Mike about this. It's very common in this area and many other Residence A areas with these split levels to have this kind of issue come up because a lot of people want to expand their kitchen. That's normally the reasoning. Kitchen's in the front, split level, it's difficult to expand that anywhere except to go forward. So there's several grants in the thirty-two to thirty-three range all around this area, all for very similar reasons of having difficulty working with a split-level house. So they expanded into the front.
Thank you.
I'm twenty-six dash twenty-five, adjourned from September nine, twenty twenty-five. Philip and Sarah Ragusa. Permission to elevate dwelling and erect one-story addition seventeen point two by twenty point two, leaving side yard of nine point eight feet instead of required ten feet and rear yard of sixteen point three feet instead of required twenty-five feet. To elevate shed, leaving rear yard of one point six feet instead of required ten feet. To elevate and install deck, leaving side yard of five point eight feet and rear yard of six feet instead of required fifteen feet each. And outdoor shower, leaving rear yard of six feet instead of required ten feet. All having floor area ratio of thirty-nine percent instead of permitted thirty percent. Residence B A A District, east side of Birch Walk, forty feet south of Central Walk, Fair Harbor.
Good evening. So we were before the board back in September. We did reduce the FAR to thirty-nine. It seems to be a lot of precedence in that thirty-nine, forty range. We did reduce the rear yard setback of the deck and the shower to six feet. There is that right-of-way in the back as well that kind of acts as a buffer. There is the existing shed that we are proposing to lift. I sent a picture over the shed, it's very small, it's only, it's less than eight feet tall and maybe five and a half feet tall in the back. So we did the best we could to reduce the scope of all the additions to keep the FAR at thirty-nine and to keep the rear yard setback at six, keeping in mind the right-of-way in the back helps as a separation.
What do we have at thirty-nine percent in that neck of the woods? I know Fair Harbor is just exploding every which way. So how many houses have we granted thirty-nine?
I have a list of thirty-nine, thirty-nine point four, forty, and two forty point eight, so one, two, three, four, five.
All within five hundred?
Relatively close that I've discussed with planning.
All within five hundred?
I believe so.
All within five hundred feet, yeah.
Get another explosion.
What?
We're gonna have another explosion.
Of what? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Planning, any comments on the overall application?
I just wanted to clarify one point. I, I believe we went over this, the, the overall height of the shed after it's elevated, that's still less than fourteen, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's like, what's, twelve or thirteen, something like that?
Yeah, I would say thirteen feet.
Which a shed could in theory be up to fourteen feet while being ground level. So in this instance, I would say it being elevated is not substantially different than just having a ground-level shed that would have been taller. Beyond that, a lot of this was discussed last time. I know at issue was the rear yards, there is a utility path behind, eight-feet-wide utility path, as is the case in many Fair Harbor cases. And certainly in the past, people have gotten more generous rear yard variances than would be typical due to the utility path. Now, as I said last time, this one was a bit closer than most of those even were. They've scaled back the deck in accordance with that comment. So I don't really have anything else much to say for now.
Is this in keeping this application the nature and character of the neighborhood?
Nature and character of the neighborhood is a bit difficult. If you wanted me to answer that in terms of what the board has previously granted in Fair Harbor, the answer would be yes. Again, five hundred-foot radius in Fair Harbor is, catches a lot of properties. So yeah, I could think of six cases with a thirty-nine percent FAR in a five hundred-foot radius. That captures probably eighty homes. So it's a complicated thing, as always, with Fair Harbor and Fire Island. But yes, there's been plenty of grants, certainly.
But so you think it may encompass eighty homes?
This is just a guess on me, I did not measure it, to be fair. It's really just me saying that the typical five hundred-foot radius gets a little complicated in Fire Island. This has been an issue, certainly not just with this specific case. This is something that's happened in Fair Harbor over the years.
My concern is we have five, six houses present, which if they were ten or twelve in the five hundred-foot radius, that would be significant. If there's eighty, yeah, possibly a number. If there's eighty, then it's not many.
Hello, my name is Suzanne St. Pierre. I'm the owner of seventy-one Birch Walk, immediately to the north of the subject property. I'm also a real estate lawyer, although I do not practice in the town of Islip. I've spent a little time looking at the zoning code in preparation for appearing in opposition to this application. And if my reading of the code is correct, the existing shed should be part of the FAR that exists today because it has plumbing in it, has a washer and dryer in it. And I believe under the definition of gross sorry, I'd like to refer to my notes. The definition of gross floor area, I believe that an accessory building equipped with plumbing fixtures is considered part of the FAR calculation.
If I recall, it had to be a certain size, but I'll double-check.
Water, water. There, there, there washer and dryer. Okay. I, I don't think it says, sir, plumbing.
I could not say definitively, I've never been asked this question before, although I would normally think plumbing fixtures would be like bath, shower, sink.
I, I don't have the code in front of me, but I don't think it says plumbing fixtures. I think it says plumbing, I could be mistaken. But the, I think the difference, taking the architect's, the numbers in the architect's plan, the difference there is about thirty-nine percent FAR versus almost forty-two percent. In either case, I think that this would result in a structure that is out of character with the rest of the street. My home immediately adjacent is a small, low-rise structure. That is what the block looks like. I heard a tall tale that it may have been a former army barrack floated over from Long Island after World War Two. So that, I, I mention that because it gives you a sense of the street. It's, it's low-rise, it's rustic. I'm not saying there are not any two-story structures on the street, but the one that comes to mind oppo, on the opposite side of the street is built on a piece of property twice as big as the applicant's. Most of the structures on the block have been relatively unchanged since I bought the house twenty-five years ago. I think the neighbors appreciate the, the low-rise rustic quality of the street and the surrounding streets. I believe that the three abutting property owners unanimously oppose this application. I also think from my own personal point of view, this extension of the structure into the backyard, together with the raising of the structure and the shed, the accessory buildings, is going to cast my backyard into shadow, it's going to cut off breeze from my backyard. And I don't think that's good for the neighborhood. I don't think that's good for me and my enjoyment of my property. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I don't know if you remember, I was here last time as well. I, I just want to say, these four houses, the applicant's house these four houses, the applicant's house and Suzanne's house on the other side, our house on the other side, and Estelle's house to the rear, have all been there for about a hundred years, all four of them, in exactly the same configuration that they are now. And I believe actually the, the so-called Bittser cottages, which Suzanne's house, our house, and Estelle's house are all identical houses. And I think, I heard that they were floated over, but it was after World War One, and they all survived the thirty-eight hurricane. In any event, these houses are small, they're modest, these are vacation homes. My family cannot fit in our house. We take turns using it. This, this is a modest neighborhood of little tiny vacation homes that are all right next to each other. Our living room window is less than ten feet from the house of the applicants. If that's gonna be raised to be fourteen feet from the starting point of the structure and then adding the, the height of the first floor, we will be looking out into the undercarriage, so to speak, of their house. This would be a massive, massive change to our experience as neighbors. And it absolutely would diminish the value of our property if we were ever to try to sell this house or any of the other adjacent houses. It completely changes the character of the neighborhood. I don't know what houses the architect is talking about within five hundred feet. I invite you to come out to Fair Harbor and take a view of this situation. This is so far out of character with the houses in this neighborhood that is, to me, preposterous to argue that it's within character. This would be a massive detrimental effect upon all the neighbors. And I've heard from other neighbors up and down the walk, up and down Birch Walk and Cranberry Walk, that pretty much everybody in town is kind of outraged at the scale of this application and what it would do to allow properties to fill up their yards with this additional amount of structure. I also would point out, we appreciate that this is a luxury. We don't take it for granted. We don't take it lightly. As I said, these are modest, these are not McMansions. But this, even though there's a housing crisis in this country, and we appreciate people's need to build housing to, you know, house their growing families, you don't have to have a vacation home. They bought this vacation home just three or four years ago, already having, there's two children that they have now. And they bought it knowing the exact size it was. And now they're saying they're bursting at the seams and they need to make it bigger. They could have bought a larger house somewhere else, or they didn't have to buy a house. But to completely destroy the character of this neighborhood, to allow these people to completely overbuild this lot would be grossly unfair and grossly out of keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And when you apply the balancing test, which I'm sure the board is very familiar with, this in no way meets the standard. And I just wanted to add, I, I mean, I, I, this is the second time I've come down here from Cambridge, Massachusetts, at great expense and significant time out of my life to oppose this. And, you know, we're not, I'm also a lawyer. We're not unprepared to fight further if we have to, but I can't imagine why you would think that this would be an appropriate application. Having listened to all of these applications before us tonight, you're talking about inches here and inches there, and little tiny pieces of F A R being too much. This is twice as much essentially F A R, and raised fourteen feet off the ground, completely interfering with all aspects of our lives and all the neighbors' lives. Well, I do, I'm pretty sure that it's more than this. However, the entire front third or so is a screen porch. So although it counts as F A R, it's not within the living area of the house. I don't know the exact number. I know that it's probably closer to what they're talking about. But that's not the character of the neighborhood. As far as it's condensed, if you look at the yard area around our house and Suzanne's... Ours is seventy-nine, right. It's set back much further from the, well, the distance in the front is, is identical. But in the rear, it's much greater. And again, I mean, the, we don't think that these are appropriate. I think it's overbuilt already, the way these houses are. They can't tolerate more building. Well, go out and look. This, this, that, what they want to do would be so far out of character for this neighborhood that it would be really appalling. Go, go look. Go walk up and down Birch Walk in Fair Harbor. This, this is not the kind of structure that exists in this area of Fair Harbor. Now, I don't know which houses the architect's talking about within five hundred feet. There have been some large things built recently that most people aren't that happy with, but the fact that some things are encroaching away at the character of the neighborhood and somehow have gotten approval should not be the standard that this board applies. Well, it should stop before this, because this is not... Our house was built a hundred years ago, and the, the Fire Island Development Company put all these houses there together. When my grandfather bought our house, he asked the developer if he could buy the lots on either side to have more space. And they said, no, they wanted to build rental properties so they could get rent revenues. This was always a little working-class neighborhood of little houses near each other. So the fact that there is some benefit derived from grandfathered status shouldn't mean that that's the character of the neighborhood that you're looking to... The size of... I, I don't think that you'll find that if you go look at them. Oh, we'll see. Which walk? Due to it. Well, I, I respectfully urge you to deny the application. Thank you.
I'll, I'll let Mike speak.
I'd just like to add a few more things. So to the state code, if we want to add an addition of any size to the house, we have to lift the house to meet the FEMA guidelines. So we're in FEMA flood zone nine. The state says we have to add two feet of freeboard, so we have to be at least eleven, and we're going up to twelve feet above sea level. So the walk's at four and a half. We're going up, it'll be seven and a half feet above the walkway, as required by FEMA and the state codes. I think there is plenty of precedence in the area. We're not breaking precedence for any of the F A R or the rear yard setback. I think if we took a good look in Fair Harbor, there would be plenty of nature and character of houses with those setbacks. Oh, let's say, let's say Fair Harbor. Yep. Right. Thank you.
I would just say, Mike is definitely right. They do have to raise, so at least in terms of the elevation, it's, it sort of comes along with the fact that they want to do the addition, but the elevation part of itself is something that is being required of them. As far as the rest of this, I would say that Mike is, again, he's correct that there is precedent for this. That has been utilized by the board as a, sort of what I would say is a shortcut for what they would consider nature and character in the past. It doesn't always work perfectly. Certainly with smaller lots like this, I, I tried to actually count it out while we were discussing, and I actually think eighty might have been in underselling how many lots are in that area. Now, this is again very common in Fair Harbor. Decisions have been made in the past based on these kinds of considerations. So whether or not that's considerable as nature and character, that is a thing to discuss, I believe, certainly. It's, Fair Harbor has in many ways kind of gotten away from the board in terms of precedent in the past. But yes, this would be keeping with previous decisions, certainly.
Well, since it was a lot of discussion about not knowing where the precedents were, should we know where the precedents are, or have you exchanged addresses?
In terms of the specific location and how close they are to the subject, I don't know that out, right now, no.
Well, I think that's information we should have, and...
Since it was a lot of discussion about not knowing where the precedents were, do we want them in the record, or?
We do want them in the record.
Of course.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we needed to ask for that.
I think we also have to figure out what the prior opinions of the board are and what is plumbing.
I, I understand that, and I think there should be a right, give a presentation, post-hearing presentation, and a rebuttal if that's necessary, too.
Just to speak on that really quick, I did look at the code. It does specify plumbing fixtures.
Well, that's what I thought.
So fixtures is used in the definition. Again, I don't know a hundred percent. I've always assumed that means sink, bath, shower, three-piece plumbing sort of thing.
So not a washer?
Not that I've been aware of in the past, but I would probably want to clarify that with zoning to make sure.
Okay. So we'll, we'll ask for post-hearing submissions from...
Well, the applicant would typically, if the applicant's making the argument that it's consistent with previous approvals of the board, we kind of need to know what those approvals are. Okay. Okay, so then it will be circulated to the three people who have contacted the office, okay? And then, would you like some time to rebut? I'm speaking to the concerned neighbors. Okay.
Let's fix the time. Mr. Dunn, how much time do you want? Thirty days? Less?
No, he said a few days.
Less?
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
And you folks, you want two weeks? To rebut, three weeks?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What, what are you asking for?
Three weeks.
No, yeah, but she wants to introduce new test, new...
Yeah, but what are you looking to, you can't introduce new information at that...
Yeah, this is, this is really just because we discussed specific approvals of the board and didn't know what the approvals were. I don't think we're really opening up the nature and character argument. I think that, I think you did a, I think that was well...
Addressed.
Addressed, yeah.
So basically, your, hang on a minute.
Unless, unless you want to give another hearing.
Basically, your, no, just the third one. Basically, your rebuttal would be limited to nature and character, whatever is presented, and also what plumbing fixtures are.
I would actually take it a step further. I think any opposition submitted to the post-hearing submission should only speak to things that are brought up in that post-hearing submission. So only speak to that. No new, new arguments presented. Again, just stick to whatever in the four corners of that post-hearing submission says. That's what you should speak to.
So that, can they do their own foils? And since they did bring up that there is no precedent, can they do their own foil and find denials? I think that would be fair. Why not? To rebut?
I mean, can't stop the...
Who's gonna do the research? Right. Who's gonna do the research?
That? Why do you know where the...
Because that's where the foil comes to. Me.
And I can't practice. Oh, everybody understood? How about you invite three weeks?
All right. Where, where am I? Hold on, everyone. Okay. Application number six oh six dash twenty-five, Philip and Christine Steinkrauss. Permission to erect second-story addition, leaving front yard of fifteen point eight-three feet instead of required twenty-five feet, and roofed over porch, leaving front yard of fourteen point eight-one feet instead of permitted encroachment setback of twenty feet, resulting in floor area ratio of thirty-two point three percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent, and to leave patio on rear property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence B District, northeast side of Adams Street East and Wantaw Avenue, East Islip.
Good evening. Christine Steinkrauss and Philip Steinkrauss, fifteen Adams Street East in East Islip.
Okay. I think the big question here is gonna be the F A R.
Yeah. We are planning on expanding our family, so we just need more space. Really not enough room right now for what's coming.
As far as nature and character.
I don't really have anything to help them with the F A R. It's, nor do I really have anything to really help much with the second-story addition at fifteen point eight, other than that this is a very strangely angled house at the corner. So I don't really have too much to help them whatsoever. I, I suppose I will speak, at least with regards to the porch, that actually is pretty well-supported. It's probably the least important part of this application to them, but at least that much is well-supported. But yeah, a, as far as the front yard setback, they are disadvantaged in the fact that their house is sort of angled towards the corner of the lot rather than facing a street. The F A R is what it is, and I don't really have anything to...
What do you have as far as the F A R? You have any?
Nothing.
Nothing over twenty-five?
I I have nothing that I found, I usually, when I look for that, I guess if it's over thirty, I would try to look for something over thirty, so...
So you have thirty?
Not that I have written down, that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, I guess. That, that's why I don't usually bother to get the things at two, twenty-five, and thirty.
Nature and character being part of the house.
Okay. Five hundred feet from the, okay. So thirty percent is usually what we give for that. Is that acceptable?
Honestly, my architect sent me here, and he was telling me that there were in the neighborhood far over the thirty, that it was the thirty-two point three percent.
What's your architect?
Toby Caputi.
Don't recognize the name.
No, sounds like he's wrong.
Yeah, that's...
Did, did he happen to tell you where they were?
He's the reason why I sent you.
I, I see that now as I'm standing here. He had said it wouldn't be an issue at all, so that's why it was...
Can I suggest we do one of two things? I mean, we'll, we give up the thirty percent. The code's at twenty-five, we give the thirty. We can either give you that, or we can adjourn it, so you go back to speak to your architect and, and read him the right act.
Okay.
And, and see if he can sharpen his pencil. If he can get to thirty percent, and that's two, that would be...
Okay. So then just go back to him and have the thirty percent?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult for them. It's, it's 15.8 at the corner. It does get better, and it's... There's a lot of these houses that are sort of at intersections that face towards the intersection rather than facing towards one of the property lines. It often causes issues like this for the people there.
I don't mean to interrupt. We're just going up and over the existing structure. That's like the garage, that's, you know what I'm saying? That's why, I guess, when I'm thinking of going back to him, I'm just trying to figure out where we would lose those, that almost, the 2.3 percent. So that's... I guess so, yeah. Right, right, so I guess we'll go back to him. Okay, thank you. Okay. 30, okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Application number 607-25, Esperanza Fuentes Peas and Estella Reyes Fuentes. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-602, leaving second front door where a maximum of one visible front door is permitted. To leave shed on property line not having required setback of two feet, patio on property line not having required setback of four feet, driveway having side yard of 1.3 feet instead of required four feet, and front yard occupancy of 46 percent instead of permitted 40 percent. Residence A District, east side of Freeman Avenue, 100.455 feet south of Pear Street, Brentwood.
Nobody stepping up?
Oh.
Is anybody here on this application? All right, you're not the applicant? All right, so we'll...
6:30.
6:30 call at 7:30 right now?
Let's adjourn it. I don't want the particular night.
Yeah, let's make sure that they...
Pardon? Please come forward.
No, I'm saying, I don't want a second call.
No, no, we're just going to see when they can come back. When they can come back. So we'll adjourn it when it's convenient for them so they don't make another trip.
The applicant, obviously, is not here. So we're going to have to adjourn the case.
Okay.
When is it convenient for you to come back? Mine, it's got to be Tuesday night.
A Tuesday night?
Yeah, well, it would be November 18 would be your next available.
Ah, that, that's perfect.
Okay.
Good for you.
Yeah. Jocelyn Ambrosio?
And your address?
487 Freeman Avenue. I'm directly next to them.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn until November 18. All in favor? Adjourn to November 18.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a whole hour's gone by. Application number 608-25, Stephen Baumann Diamond. Permission to erect one-story addition leaving side yard of 12.4 feet, roofed over entrance leaving side yard of eight feet, and roofed over porch leaving side yards of 12.2 feet and 12.4 feet instead of required 14 feet each. Total side yards of 19.2 feet instead of required 28 feet, and front yard of 19.2 feet instead of required 25 feet, resulting in floor area ratio of 33.5 percent instead of permitted 25 percent, and to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-419.1. Residence B District, north side of Independence Avenue, 178.61 feet west of Higby Lane, West Islip.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Baumann Diamond. I live at 309 Independence Avenue, West Islip, New York.
Hi, I'm Heather Diamond, his daughter.
All right, so we got the two, the two-family use. We've got the, you got all the information in here for that. Planning, what do you have on the FAR and the rest of the application?
Before we proceed, can I just say, right here, it says that we're permission to erect a one-story addition. It's a two-story addition that's stated and shown on our drawings. I don't know if there's a typo on here.
Doesn't matter, just changes.
Permission to erect, it should say two-story.
Yes, it's on, it's on the plans in the drawings, I'll say.
That's fine, I believe you.
Make an application to amend the call to a two-story addition. All in favor?
Thank you.
Two-story addition, okay? Is there anything else you'd like to say at this time?
No.
Okay. Planning, what do you have?
So the thing that would probably stand out to the board members is the FAR grant, uh, the FAR request, sorry. And this is actually relatively easy for them to address. The reason why it's this high is because the porch is counting against them, and the only reason it's counting against them is because of the depth of the porch.
The porch, I couldn't hear you.
The porch, yeah. So currently, they think they have the porch at about 8.6 feet in depth. Any roofed-over porch in the front yard that is six feet in depth or less does not count for gross floor area at all. Did this calculation. If they reduce the porch, just the, I think it would be 2.6 feet, whatever gets them to six feet or less, and it doesn't count anymore, that gets them underneath 30 percent FAR.
Underneath what percent?
It would get them underneath 30 percent. Additionally, actually, they're supposed to be getting a permitted encroachment for the front yard for this porch. Now, I don't know if that needs necessarily be amended. If they would agree to reduce the porch back to six feet in depth, they actually wouldn't need this variance whatsoever. It would be conforming.
I have one question for you on that.
If you could please speak into the microphone.
I just have one question. On the front porch, on the left side of the house, if you see, it's six feet now, and then the right side of the house is eight feet, the porch, because the way the house comes out, so would we have to go to four feet on the six-feet side and then to six feet on the eight-feet side? Or could be six feet across?
I think it's measured the depth from the front projection of the wall, so... I don't know the specifics on your exact circumstances, although...
As long as it's six feet or lower, then that doesn't count towards our FAR?
Correct.
Okay, so we can...
So six feet in depth, whether or not, I, I'm pretty sure it's from the forward wall projection. So if there's part of your house that's further up than the rest of it, I think it's six feet all along rather than four foot then six feet?
Yeah, there's one side of the house that, the wall comes out a bit, so that porch there is six feet out, where the other side of the house, the porch would be eight feet out. So as long as everything's six feet or below, we're good?
Right.
Uh, yes, it should be good.
Okay.
Again, you should double-tag zone, assuming this is something you're amenable to.
Yes, we're fine with doing that.
Obviously, that would be up to you, but I think that would resolve any issues with this application.
Yes, we'll have no problem taking off the two, two-and-a-half feet on the porch.
Okay, so the FAR, FAR goes to 30, you'll be in compliance?
I believe so.
Correct. And the rest of the application is good?
I believe so. Yeah.
Is anyone else would like to be heard in this application? All right, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I guess, may I make a motion? How do we grant the application as amended?
Well, it hasn't been amended.
Oh.
Well, just the two-story.
Being granted except the FAR is being denied.
And I don't think they need a front yard variance, but...
Okay, so then, that's right, we already amended the one to two, so then... Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny so much of the application seeking 32.5 percent FAR. It's at 25, we grant 30 percent, and grant amended the application.
Give me a second, please.
Yeah, and the two-family, family use only for a period of three years.
All in favor? You got a second? Yeah, we got a second. All in favor? Aye. The application is granted as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. Okay, application number 609-25, N. and N. Mazzella Management, Inc. Permission to erect retaining wall, 2.85 feet in height, having side yards of two feet instead of required four feet each. Business One District, south side of Montalk Highway, 121.47 feet west of Bridle Way, Oakdale.
Good evening. Neil Mazzella, 31 Magro Drive, North Babylon, and Natalia Mazzella.
Okay, we're here just on the retaining wall?
Yeah, the retaining wall height.
Planning, any comments?
No, but this helps their site design, so actually this is beneficial to the overall site to keep it at this setback rather than conforming.
Okay, is anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Take a motion, please. Take a motion to approve the application. Second? All in favor? Aye. Application granted, thank you.
All right. Yep. Application number 610-25, Brolio Barbecia. Permission to erect one-story addition leaving front yard of 17.1 feet instead of required 25 feet, and side yard of 10.67 feet instead of required 14 feet. To install basement entrance, leaving side yard of 11.96 feet instead of required 14 feet. To leave detached garage having seven feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required 20 feet, and to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-602 on lot having area of 6,684 square feet instead of required 7,500 square feet, and lot width of 55 feet instead of required 75 feet. Residence B District, west side of Weeks Avenue, 400 feet north of Sepic Avenue, central Islip.
Hello, board members. My name is Esteban Lopez. 210 South Haven Avenue, Metford, New York, 10763. I'm the agent for the owner of 14 Weeks Avenue. I'm here requesting relief to enclose an already-existing porch. This porch does not, this porch does predate ownership of my client, and we are here in the process of legalizing. The SEPEC required is 25 feet. Once we enclose it, it would have 17.1 feet. There are similar houses within 500 feet with enclosed porches, 20 Weeks and 24 Weeks. We are also requesting relief to maintain a detached garage having seven feet behind front line of dwelling instead of required 20 feet. This structure also predates my client's ownership, so it's not self-created. There aren't a lot of houses in the area that have detached garages due to the small lot sizes, but I was able to find a property, 36 William Avenue, that has a detached garage which is actually proud of the dwelling. We are also asking relief to erect an outside basement entrance having a side yard of 11.96 feet where 14 feet is required. Since this is a 55-foot-wide, non-conforming lot, any changes proposed will require a variance of some sort. With that said, we are also proposing a legal 385 square feet accessory apartment in the basement on a lot having 6,684 square feet where 7,500 is required. Based on aerial maps and driving around, most of the houses in the area do have an outside basement entrance that does not comply to the 14 feet required setback. We don't believe the changes we are asking will have an adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood. We do, we do have three letters here in support from direct neighbors. Do I bring it up? We hope the board takes this into consideration. I do want to put on record that on our driveway review from engineering, they recommended we extend the driveway in order to have enough space for additional parking for the accessory apartment, and we have already applied. We got the permit and extended to comply. If you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Yes. So we got a permit for it, and they, they just finished the work, and we still getting final inspection for it. So we extended it based on their recommendations. Correct. And they get, they issued us the permit for it, to do the work. We extended the driveway, and we're in the process of doing the final inspection for it. Sure, I can...
So there's a couple of things to note here beyond whatever is happening with the driveway. It's, I'll start with the garage, and it's, it's my understanding that this was a CO'd structure. It was CO'd as an attached garage, attached by a breezeway. What seems to have happened is that they, they demolished the breezeway and left the garage sort of standing, so they, in essence, made their attached garage, a detached garage. That's a bit of a complication because now it's, doesn't have the proper setback behind the front line of the dwelling. As to why they got rid of the breezeway, I'm not exactly sure. Certainly was not done without permit.
Uh, yeah, that was already removed before my, my client got hold of the house. He purchased it in 2020, so that was already removed before then. We just found out when we started doing the process that there was a breezeway there. Yeah, so that wasn't removed by my client.
It's unfortunate, certainly, because it was a legally existing CO'd structure, and then now it needs a variance.
To be honest, I don't think the breezeway was ever done. We were looking at it, and it doesn't seem like somebody removed it.
I believe it was listed on the CO.
I believe at some point they, they requested it to make a breezeway, to make this legal, but it seems like it was never done. I mean, I walked around...
I think if it's, well, I'll double-check to make sure I'm right. I don't think they would put that on the CO unless it was inspected and they saw the breezeway as existing.
Yeah, it could have been some, yeah. Didn't, we couldn't really tell if something was removed, didn't look like it.
Really, the point being is that it went from being attached to detached, and that's why you're here.
Sure, sure, yeah. I agree with that.
As far as the addition in the front yard goes, they're taking what would be, I believe, a permitted encroachment, or at least to some degree, permitted encroachment for a porch, and trying to enclose it into an addition. That's not typically something we would like to see done. There's a reason why so very often the board will look at a porch and say, "Oh, well, it's close, but never to be enclosed." Comes up often enough. Usually it's because they're close there, and this kind of seems like the exact kind of thing we would want to prevent people from doing, is having these additions rather than the porches encroaching into the front yard. As far as the side yards go, I think the side yards aren't that bad, so no real issue there. That's really all I have to say about it. Oh, yeah, the lot width and the lot area for the accessory apartment, that's complicated.
That's why we need, that's why...
The new driveway configuration is so important.
I, I have it on my iPad, the permit, the driveway size that they requested, I have...
You want to give us your iPad?
Sure. No, I can show you guys.
Because generally, when a lot is undersized, the main concern is those four off-street parking spaces that you have to provide if you're, if you'd like to have an accessory apartment. So with it being only 55 foot at the street property line, and only, you're proposing a front yard of only 17, something like that, it seems unlikely that you'd be able to fit four cars on the property without using the right-of-way.
Yeah, we had this whole meeting with the highway department. They told us what size needed to be.
Well, DPW for the curb, the apron is different from engineering for our driveway review for the accessory apartment.
Correct. But it was, the application was to make the apron bigger and the driveway bigger.
Right. Was it for capacity purposes, to fit four cars for the accessory apartment?
Yes, correct.
Okay, then it's really important that we see that, given the undersized nature of this lot.
Yeah, we do have the paperwork.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? No? All right, anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Lopez?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we reserve subject to engineering report.
Do I, do I email it to somebody, or?
Somebody here.
Will you be able to get it?
Uh, yeah, you could just, can you bring it into the office? That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah. I can bring that in, no problem.
Yes.
All right, so I made a motion to reserve. Any second, please?
Anybody's attention?
No.
Anybody's specific, just to the office?
Anybody who helps you at the counter will know what to do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to take a break, Chris, just do?
Yeah, you want to take a quick?
I wouldn't mind a five-minute. This looks like it's going to be a while. Everybody okay with a five-minute?
Make a motion, we take a five-minute break?
Second.
Start yelling.
Everybody ready? Everybody ready? Okay, everybody, we're ready to resume. Application number six-eleven dash twenty-five, Good Samaritan Hospital Medical Center. Permission to install ground sign having area of ninety-four point seven-two square feet instead of permitted forty-five point one-three square feet and height of ten point nine-two feet instead of permitted eight point eight-three feet. Two institutional ground signs having area of thirty-five point three-three square feet instead of permitted twenty-four square feet, both having height of ten feet instead of permitted six point seven feet and nine point five feet. Facial sign having area of one hundred and five point two square feet instead of permitted thirty-two square feet, and two institutional facial signs having area of thirty-eight point two-five square feet instead of permitted sixteen square feet. All facial signs having height of eighty-six point seven feet instead of permitted twelve feet, and two public interest signs having area of seventy-seven point eight square feet and seventy-seven point three square feet instead of permitted three square feet and height of twenty feet and seventeen point two-five feet instead of permitted ten feet each, and mounted atop canopy exceeding permitted building projection of one foot. General Service C District, southwest corner of Montalk Highway and Beach Drive, West Islet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of zoning board of appeals, John Anzalone for Harris Beach P L C, three-three-three, Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite nine-zero-one, Uniondale, New York, one-one-five-five-three, attorney for the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation to you this evening. We are here with respect to Good Samaritan University's hospitals, variance application for fascia canopy, uh, fascia public interest, which is located on a canopy, and ground signs related primarily to the new patient care pavilion, which is nearing completion of its construction at the hospital campus. With us today in support of the application, we have Andrew Nee from V H B Engineering, who will briefly explain the need for the size of the ground signs, as well as Jim Proch, Vice President of Real Estate and Facility Administration for Catholic Health, who is here to answer any questions about operations as they may relate to the signed variance. As noted, the property is owned by a resident C, which makes the hospital right, as of right, and the hospital has been located at the property since nineteen fifty-nine. Sure, absolutely. The patient care pavilion was, was approved by the town board in twenty-twenty-one and is a six-story, three-hundred-thousand-square-foot modernization of the hospital campus. As part of the modernization, the emergency, all right, so stuff, you good? All right, all right. All right, okay, understand, understand. All right, got it, understood. As part of the modernization, the emergency department was moved, which ties into several of the variances before the board this evening. Tonight, the applicant is seeking public interest signs reading ambulance and emergency above the two new emergency room entrances. One ground side each at the three entrances along Montalk Highway, and three Catholic Health wall signs at the sixth floor of the patient care pavilion facades. All three ground signs, the emergency sign and the wall sign spelling out the name of the hospital, face Montalk Highway and the medical uses located thereon. The ambulance and Catholic Health logo sign each face vehicles traveling west on Montalk Highway, and the remaining sign, one Catholic Health logo, faces vehicles traveling east on Montalk Highway. At this time, I would like to submit an exhibit prepared to compare the proposed signs to those both existing and publicly proposed at South Shore University Hospital in Bayshore, as this is the only true apples-to-apples comparison in the town with respect to the types of signs before the board this evening. Technically smaller, as we don't have donor names on our signs. Yes, it's smaller because we don't have the donor names, but we do have different wording of the things, obviously, because if you go to South Shore, like you can drive down Union Boulevard on the way here, you see the Northwell emblem on like their parking garage, and then the huge Enteben family campus along the side of it. We don't have, like, we don't have donor names, so we have, just say, instead of saying emergency room, buy this donor, or just says emergency. From what I can see in those pictures that you'll see in front of you, it looks like South, uh, South sides are larger than ours. We don't know. I can tell you by looking at the mass of the signs on the sides of the building that the answer is. I suspect he doesn't know exactly the exact size of those signs, but I can tell you from looking at them that they definitely appear larger. Well, I could look at a building that's six stories up and see the size of the sign, and then look at what mine is proposed at, and I can relate them based on the size. Although, we have a, an expert here who can, the board, who might be able to opine.
I can check.
While we wait, turning to the relief, the relief will not result in undesirable change in the character of the area or be detrimental to nearby properties along Montalk Highway as the area is fully developed and commercial, primarily with medical and institutional uses of which this property has been a developed part for over sixty-five years. As can be seen in the renderings, the wall signs are both proportional to the patient care pavilion and smaller than what exists at South Side, South Shore University Hospital, and what appears to be proposed based on what has been publicly made available, although I will defer to the board to see if that is in fact true. The wall sign height is also based on the design of the building to allow for proper identification of the facility. In short, installing the secondary Catholic Health logo signs at sixteen square feet would make the same virtually impossible to identify, given that they are approximately six stories above ground, and given the step-back building design, which results in the signs being approximately a hundred and sixty-nine feet from Montalk Highway and a hundred and fifty-seven feet from Beach Lane. The primary wall sign is also not imposing on the building facade, where it is located at approximately a hundred and sixty-three feet from Montalk Highway, and again, approximately six stories above ground level. The lettering is also less substantial than exists at South Side, given their use of donor names in their signage. Turning to the public interest signs, the proposed ambulance and emergency signs are designed to make clear where those requiring emergency care should now enter the hospital building. The town code restricts such signs to three square feet, which would not be visible to anyone from Montalk Highway, as is over a hundred and fifty feet from the emergency sign and partially shielded by required vegetation. As can be seen on the rendering of the emergency sign, such sign is proportional to the building, while it is also making it abundantly clear to the public where the emergency room patients should enter the building. The ambulance sign is proposed with a similar design, except it will be white. The height of the sign is also dictated by the canopies that are designed to provide cover for ambulance drivers, EMS workers, emergency workers at the hospital, and patients in need of emergency care. Finally, the ambulance and emergency signs are similar to what has existed and publicly been proposed at South Side, and do not contain the donor's name, that makes such public interest signs larger at South Side. Concerning the ground signs, first, as is reflected in the mail, I wish to clear up any potential confusion that our sign vendor may have inadvertently caused. To be clear, and for the record, the ground signs, as required by the town board approval, will be externally illuminated only. There is no application by Good Samaritan University Hospital to the town board for any relief of covenants associated with the patient care pavilion. Second, the hospital has requested that the size of the proposed signs, in order to ensure that each contains prominent directional markings directing such patients to the relocated emergency room, and for two smaller signs, which require variances of a little over nine square feet and half a foot in overall height, to allow for directions to specific onsite services offered at the hospital. The primary ground sign is deliberately oversized for the purpose of drawing attention of those seeking emergency care to enter at the center driveway, which is where the facility was designed to receive them. The signs must be suitably sized for patients traveling approximately forty miles an hour on Montalk Highway, so that the patients have enough time to recognize the driveway and safely make turning movement necessary into the site. Again, these signs are very similar to those at South Side. Given the purposes of the additional square footage, the hospital submits that these requests will not only serve to benefit the hospital, but its patients and visitors from the local community served thereby. The proposed variances will also not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions, as they are solely related to signage. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Andrew Nee of V H B to briefly discuss the main ground sign.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the, yeah, sure. Let me know if I should slow down. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Andrew Nee with V H B Engineering, a licensed professional engineer, with offices at one hundred Motor Parkway, located in Hop Dog, New York. Just briefly touching upon the main ground sign located at the central access drive, it's a proposed, and... That is correct, yes. That's located at the intersection, the main access drive across from Milligan Lane. That's our center access, and as Mr. Anzalone mentioned, that's primary purpose is to identify the hospital with their branding, as well as the large red and white band, white lettering showing the emergency entrance. And that's the main focal point, that we want to direct people to the emergency department entrance when they're arriving to the site. The lettering is eight inches tall on that sign, and the tall's, uh, it's a ten-foot, eleven-inch-tall sign, and with that lettering size at forty miles an hour, it affords drivers the approximate distance of three hundred and fifty feet to be able to read, process the information, and then make the appropriate turn into the center access drive. That's the main driving force of the sign vendor's proposed signage at that location, and again, the focus of where we're trying to people, get people into the hospital campus under an emergency situation. So I understand, or trust, that this board can understand the need for that clear legible signage, for a driver to be able to process the information and make a reasonable decision, potentially under duress or emergency situation. So with that, if you have any questions, sure. Well, I would say with related to the emergency department logo, yeah, no, just saying that the height, yes, sir. Understood your point. I, where I was going with the height was related to getting it up elevated. There is some proposed vegetation that was installed, and you want to get it basically prominent. A vehicle could be in front of you, potentially blocking your sight distance or something to that effect, so getting it higher affords you that ability. The sign, it's elevated. You could see a pedestrian there for scale. I mean, we have some mature growth trees installed along Montalk Highway. No. But you want to get visibility from a distance, yes. Understood. No, I'm just checking Mr. Anzalone. Yeah. May, may I respond? Yes. Yeah. So related to what I was saying earlier is to get that elevated. I won't speak to the sign, or the size of the logo of the hospital. I agree with you that everyone knows Good Samaritan University Hospital is located here, and there's plenty of signage, logos on the building and such. But related to the emergency department entrance, I still stand by, from a distance, you want to be able to see that, and therefore get it elevated above grade, have clear sight distance to that. Whether the logo could be smaller or not, I won't argue, but I'm saying that having the need for having that elevated, a box truck could be in front of you, for example, and block your sight distance, so the more elevated is, affords that benefit of more sight distance.
So the more elevated it is, affords that benefit of more sight distance for people to be able to see that entrance and make a decision to turn into it in an emergency situation. Thank you. Thank you.
Just turning back to that for just one moment. Along the entire frontage, there will be street trees planted pursuant to the town code regulations. And those street trees will all be larger than the ground signs. So some of them will grow lower, and as trees do, the branches go down. They will not, obviously directly in front of the ground sign in any way block the ground sign. But as you are approaching it from, particularly approaching it from what would be the... You're approaching it from the west, driving east, that sign would be obstructed. It would not see so much obstructed from driving from what would be the east side, driving west, because obviously you're on the, in that case, the north side of the road, and those trees are not really as impactful. Yeah. The reason why it's, you know, the sign was designed the size it was is because we want to draw people, frankly, to draw people's attention to the center driveway. So yes, when you're talking about, is the sign of Catholic Health, could it be smaller? The answer to that is yes. We don't, we're not arguing. Yeah, we're not arguing about the Catholic Health logo could be reduced. These signs are not fabricated in any way. We have complete ability to design them to what this board approves. We designed them for what we believe is consistent with what was done at Southside. To the extent we're wrong, we of course will abide by whatever was given Southside. That's all we asked for.
I guess since it's been brought up multiple times now, I'll try to speak to previous decisions with regards to Southside Hospital. I believe there was question about that. So in twenty eighteen, it looks like they were approved for twelve ground signs, five at twenty-one square feet, five at thirty-six, one at fifty-nine, and the largest was one at ninety. I believe the large ground sign here is ninety-five or something close to that. I'm not looking at it right. So relatively comparable, yeah, ninety-four point seven-two, about five square feet more than what Southside was granted with their ground sign in twenty eighteen. They are also additionally given several facial signs, same as being requested here, one of which was apparently two hundred and sixty square feet, which sounds like a lot, but, and I'm sure it is a lot. So given that, I think that it's probably, as far as it goes, yes, there's only the one other hospital for them to really compare to in terms of apples to apples. They're correct in that. And the ground sign ninety versus ninety-four point seven-two is a relatively comparable thing, to speak to the point that they were trying to make there. Beyond that, what I guess I would say about this application, this has been an ongoing project for a long time. This is one small aspect of a very large project. It's been to the town board. They, to the best that I can tell, have cooperated all the conditions that were placed on them with regards to signage in this application. It was reviewed by the planning department in architecture and elevation review, and plans were, you know, recommended approval, which is why they're here at the board. They weren't allowed to come to the board until planning looked at it and said, these are something we could support.
It's realistically the only comparison you can make. They are in two different places in the town, obviously, so it's... Sure. In terms of the size of the properties? I will admit, I do not know how big the properties or buildings are off the top of my head, although I will say that Good Samaritan has a very large property, going all the way from Montauk Highway pretty much to the bay. So it's a very large property, certainly, and a large hospital. Again, I actually do not know the answer to this question. I guess the only thing I can say that really has any sense is, when you're getting onto the scale of a major hospital, it's, they're going to be tremendous regardless. I don't know if these are comparable, but both are very large buildings. Some of the buildings in the town.
I wrote some facts down, so I don't remember stuff and I don't go astray. Good evening. My name is Brian Branigan. My address is one fifteen Center Bay Drive. Not only am I a resident of the Babylon Beach Estates, which is directly west of Good Samaritan Hospital, I'm also the president of the homeowners association. I've been doing it now for fifteen years. I have to address, and give me some latitude, please, to address the applicant's effect on our community. They get to speak about how things negatively affect us. These signs will negatively affect us, and then we turn around and then, you know, they negatively affect people's eyesight and visuals and driving by every day and whatnot. The applicant has a history of not following the rules, period, right? We all know about the emergency room being moved without permits, right? So this applicant is established. It's actually established in town of ISO reports dated back to August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, that your own town reports said they cleared the south land without approved site plan, building permit issued without approved site plan. This applicant has a documented history of not following what the town puts in place. Let me just read what I have, and then you can ask me questions. And someone is going to go to negate what, how this expansion, first it was a expansion that didn't fly too well with the public, so then we had to turn it into a modernization, and we all had to eat the fabrication of this was never going to impact our neighborhood. So if I could read this, and I apologize, but... Hold on, it's just one page, sir. One page. I wrote it down because I could talk a lot. Nope. No, 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 I can talk a lot, and I apologize. And like I said, there's twenty-something people here I'm representing, and, all right. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the application before you. Thank you for the application, the opportunity to comment on the application before you. My name is Brian Branigan. I reside in an area commonly known as the Babylon Beach Estates, located directly west of the applicant. Presently and for the past fifteen years, I've represented the Babylon Beach Estates Association, the only homeowners association that directly borders the applicant, and I'm the president. The application before you requires a brief description of how the applicant has and continues to negatively affect and impact the surrounding communities, and I'm here to speak on that. Past and current behavior is an excellent indicator of future behavior. Our once quiet and peaceful environment has been impacted by the applicant's modernization project in the following ways, and this goes to counter what they say how they affected us. We have experienced the New York State DEC spill number two-three-zero-two-five-five-zero generated on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, resulting in the removal of four hundred and eight tons of contaminated soil, fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four gallons of petroleum contaminated groundwater. The site lab results were referred to the New York State DEC hazardous waste division due to the elevated lead results above groundwater standards, one incidence of negative impact to the neighborhood. Applicants continue the practice of purchasing private homes and office buildings, including office condos, then subsequently applying for whole tax exemptions, negatively impacting taxpayers like us, where the residents, small businesses, and placing the tax burden right on the West Islip School District. Applicants' traffic study application where the state and local municipalities accepted the results as adding one additional trip per minute during peak periods, because it was modernization, not an expansion, directly in the report. If anyone drives by Montauk Highway, that is one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard. It directly has affected the people sitting in this room, Babylon Beach Estates, as our ability to make a left-hand turn that comes out of East Bay Drive going west on Montauk Highway, because it was decided by the hospital's traffic study. Not us, not the community. Correct. 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 This is, I apologize, I apologize. Correct. I respectfully voice my community's opposition to any relaxation to this applicant. Any that are in place, these restrictions are in place to ensure the community and the neighborhood's concerns are respected and addressed. West Islip, unlike what they, you know, we want to talk about how apples to apples, West Islip is not Union Boulevard, West Islip's south of Montauk. They put this, it was built south of Montauk, West Islip. And what I'm saying is, the immediate area is mostly residential. It is mostly residential there. And approving signage in excess of current restrictions will only lay the foundation. They talked about it. We don't have any donors. We don't have anybody, big money people, that eventually would put their name on the building like this other hospital has. So it's only going to lay the groundwork for commercial signs in the future. I remember when living south of Montauk Highway, West Islip actually meant something other than paying high taxes. And our quiet neighborhood, where we come home from work and we want to enjoy it, it's gonna, everyone knows that this is a hospital. I would ask, do you guys have the photo of what, the front glass building, where the sign is going? Could I see it? Because when I drove out this morning, what was, if it's going up on the northeast corner of that glass expansion, the clips are already up. And if they have the audacity to put the clips on the glass building before getting approval from you, not only am I offended by it, but you guys should be offended by it. So where exactly is the sign? Because the clips are all up on the front of the building. And I appreciate your time, and I think what I... People are upset because they haven't been heard, and I appreciate you listening to me and taking the time, and thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Bruce Reben, five sixty, Bay Fifth Street, West Islip. I'm not going to bore you with a bunch of stuff I wrote down, because not all the stuff like Brian was talking about affects the signage. Let's just talk about the signage. A, Southside is way further back than our hospital is at Good Sam. If people are going to have to worry, make a turn at forty miles an hour on that block, they better worry that this label is for them nearby, unless nobody turns forty miles an hour. It's a two-lane. No one goes that fast, nobody, it doesn't happen. But what this is all about is that we want to be like Southside. That's what this is. I want to be like Mike. That's what this is right now. Well, we don't want to be like Southside. We don't have other stores around us that have big signs, and I understand with Southside, they do have their donors, so they want to be big, because they want to overlap their donors, which is understandable for advertising. They don't advertise it. Everybody knows it's a hospital. We are not in Las Vegas. We don't need this massive sign for people to know where we are. They know where we are. It's been there forever. So all I'm saying is, we want to keep our area and our neighborhood looking nice, looking presentable, not billboard signs all over the place. Just like we don't allow them on our parkways on the LIE, right? We don't allow billboards like other states do. We don't allow that. We don't want to look like that. We want a nice neighborhood, clean, good-looking buildings that look presentable, not something that's going to stick out, make us look like we're in Vegas. You don't need that big of a sign in that area. You want to put a hospital sign going east, put a little one in the corner with an arrow. That's all you got to do. They don't need a massive sign to get them to the emergency room. And if they do it forty miles an hour, they're going to miss it anyway. I like the promise here. Thank you.
Richard Thompson. I live at four-five-five Bay Fourth Street, West Islip. Just a couple of comments from what I heard earlier. Oh, I'm sorry. Just a couple of comments from what I heard earlier. I don't think you can compare the two hospitals. People alluded to it, but Southside is in a commercial area. That Main Street is not comparable to Montauk Highway, where Good Sam is. Good Sam's a community hospital. It's in a community. Southside is not a community hospital. So they can't, you can't compare the two. A lot of us are offended that Good Sam is no longer a community hospital, but to the extent we can keep it a community hospital, we'd like to do that. And unless there's some medical or safety purpose for these giant signs on the face of the building, I don't see a reason to escape the parameters of the zoning. There doesn't have to be a big sign. And as far as the Southsides has the donors, they needed big signs for donors, they have entenants. Well, Catholic Health Services is its own donor. They don't need entenants, they got Catholic Health Services. Everybody knows that. There's no point in that other than like an ego trip. So you want to minimize the signs, you want to minimize the lights, and you want the lights to designate the ER and admissions for traffic coming, so they can be alerted. And that's really the only practical purpose. Other than that, it's just, it's just a blight on the neighborhood, and it just adds to what the hospital has done. And it leads me to want to ask, what's next? This has been a long evolving process. I mean, how long before we get the application for the five-story parking garage? How long before we get the application to cut through Bay Fifth Street into Seca Tug as an exit? It's all coming. It's changed the nature of our neighborhood. We can't turn right, we can't turn left coming out of our roads, we have to go right. It's just, it's really changed it. Nobody moved there with an idea that I want to be part of this hospital complex on the South Shore. People moved there to be around the community hospital that was erected in nineteen fifty-nine. And there's really no benefit to the community of having that monstrous hospital that, you know, could be a prison, or a cruise ship, or a hospital, but it doesn't provide a benefit to us. You know, but we have to suffer from it. Our tax base is out the windows, and who makes up for the tax base? We do. So I think you need, to the extent you can pull in the reins, the community would appreciate it. And unless they can show some safety or medical reason for these massive signs on the side of the building, we don't need it. This isn't great, Nick. It's not Southside. Thank you.
Joe Frazier, seven-four-four Bay Seventh Street. We abut the hospital in Babylon Beach Estates Association. I'm not going to go over what has already been discussed by Brian and others with regard to the signage, but I will speak to two points to the board. One is, I ask you not to repeat the sins of the past with Southside Hospital. As was mentioned, it's in a very commercially zoned area. We are a neighborhood. If you look at the doctors' offices that have been there since the fifties, since before the hospital got there, they were residential homes that were converted to office buildings. It's really changed the landscape, that building. The building sits next to a boat launching ramp, a high school, a ballpark, and a playground. It also abuts the bay. So we're always concerned about what that infrastructure is doing for the community and the neighborhood. I will tell you, traffic cannot do forty miles an hour. In fact, it's a thirty mile an hour zone. You can't do thirty miles an hour. It's an impossibility now because of the traffic brought in by the hospital. We don't need signage that's that large on the top of the building so we can see it from Robert Moses Clausway or from Sunrise Highway. It's a one-lane road westbound, one-lane road eastbound. You could know that that is Good Samaritan Hospital. You could read that sign if it's a normal sign that is within your parameters. They are asking for signage that is twenty-five times what your parameters are. I ask you to please revisit that and focus on what's important, and what the expectation is for West Islip community, not for Bay Shore. They are completely different communities. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the town board. My name is David Roth. my neighbors already kind of said. Yes, so I'm just not even going to read 90% of what I had written out because they had touched on it. So, well, really the applicant's character, if I may. Okay.
That's like if you choose for us, you wanted to, you wanted next to foot, and you granted that a gazillion times, and everybody said you were fair character. That's what we are.
Right.
We have to give you, we're not a character.
Yes, sir. I just.
So you know what we have to consider, we have to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that, sir. Thank you. I just want to let you know in 2002 to 2003, I was deployed in support of Operation Spartan Shield, which was when this hospital was doing a lot of that construction work, right? So there was earthquake-like occurrences happening daily. And my wife, who was dealing with this with our kids, back at home, she had to deal with this all by herself. And she reached out to the hospital and said to them, hey, listen, there's something bad going on here, there's damage to our house, like what's going on? And they said, okay. It looked like they seized the opportunity once she mentioned that her husband was deployed. So they brought her in, the first meeting that they ever had with anyone from the community. Sat her down in a room with a bunch of lawyers, executives, and said, here's a piece of paper with no letterhead, here's data points, fill it out, send us pictures, and sign this document. And like, my wife had to deal with this and get this done before I got home. So I was able, luckily was able to get in touch with her and let her know, listen, you can't do anything, this looks like it's a strong-arm move. You know, they, he, they know that I can't do anything about it and she's all by herself. And yeah, so I just wanted to speak to the character of the applicant. Thank you.
Hello? Fred Hagamay, 125 Center Bay Drive. Excuse me, your name? Can I ask you? I can't see it's laying down. William? William? Okay. Well, what I'd like to say is, I plan on getting up and speaking, but you said it almost better than I could, as a matter of fact, I think it was better. The sign is too damn big. And the emergency room is this big and that's their whole object for arguing is with this sign. And all I can say to add to that is, you don't have to put a sign on an elephant saying it's an elephant. We know it's a hospital. We know it's an emergency room somewhere. There's only, basically that's your main entrance to get in there. And if you come from this area, I don't care if you're 40 miles away to the west, Lindenhurst, Babylon, Amityville, Kopeck, you probably were born in that hospital, your family, anything happens, your family's been in that hospital. There's no, you know where it is. It's a hospital. That's all. Just, just wanted to, I wish I could have said it as good as you.
Hi, my name's Ira. Excuse me? You did a great job. The better job is you telling them they're not getting the sign. That's a better job. Okay. One thing I like to talk to, excuse me? Yes, my name's Ira Zetmick. I'm at 88 Warren West Bay Drive, next block from the hospital. I've been in this community over 45 years and I've seen things growing. For them to put up a sign where we don't even have any commercial property there, there's nothing. There's no, at Southside, they have Burger King, they have gas stations. If you guys drive by there, just look at the difference. We're in, we're in a neighborhood. And one thing this applicant has done from the beginning in this build, we had, I'm worried about the infrastructure of the area. This is something that if there was a meeting, I would have addressed it. But on, on the incidence of them shaking the neighborhood, I called on April 26th of '22, I called every utility company, the water, the sewer, the gas, and that grid was my most important. I said to them, I'm worried about from this shaking of this incidence that we've had, that what's going on with the pipes that we have under our infrastructure in West Islip in our area. I'm very familiar that we even had six. Since the day I called, five hours after I called, we had our first gas leak. I told them it could happen a year, five years, what should I do if I want to give this house to my family? And then five hours after I called that grid, we had our first gas leak on Bay Fifth. They refused when I called the supervisor back to even address or talk to me again. We've had five incidences of gas leaks after that. We've had numerous water leaks, main breaks. We've had a sinkhole on, on June 11th of '24, on 461 Bay Fourth, we had a sinkhole. And then I went down there, I was discussing with Matt Grid, and he showed me where the water leak was, that they are a foot, foot, foot and a half, the water line and the gas line. Now you tell me that those, those pipes have been there for, for how many years, since we've changed this whole neighborhood? They used to be marshlands and they, they filled it, and now there's waterways that go onto the hospital. And that's where our problems occurred with the shaking of all the houses. But the problem I'm worried about is the future. What's going to happen if, God forbid, a house blows up because of these six gas leaks that we've had so far? Matt Grid did an investigation, they said three times, their answer was, there were three non-emergency findings in the, in the field that were identified, repaired, and made safe. We've had six. Yeah, but why would you be giving them signs when they first should be addressing what, what they've done to this community? I. Free speech, but there also should be, you know, a determination of why are they getting a sign? Why are they getting a sign that, that's, that we don't need? Excuse me? Okay, but you could tell them to have a sign that, like we're all trying to say. The sign they're asking for is, is, is something like we're in Vegas, we're not in Las Vegas. Yes, completely against the signs. Okay.
Hi, I'm Beth Thompson, I reside at 455 Bay Fourth Street. I just, I was born in West Islip, I was born at Good Samaritan Hospital, our youngest child was born at Good Samaritan Hospital. And the only thing my entire life that told everybody it was Catholic Health Services and it was Good Samaritan Hospital was the cross on the top of the building. I don't understand why we need to have neon signs right now. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Viola, I live at 801 Center Bay Drive. My larger concern is about the light pollution that's created by the signage and the large display of lights flooding the top of the building. I don't think there's a permit in place for that, but there is basically 24/7 illumination. I understand the hospital is open 24/7 and that is the business of the hospital, but we are looking at a significant light pollution coming from the hospital in a primarily residential neighborhood. Yeah. Right. Right, because the town code says up until 11:00 PM or the time of business. But because this is a public interest institution that is a hospital, it's assumed that they're open 24/7. So my, my complaint is that there is significant light pollution because we are dealing with a hospital in a, in a residential neighborhood that emits light 24/7. That's it. Thank you. Right.
Good evening. My name is William Jacobs, I live at 876 East Bay Drive in West Islip. I've lived in Western Islip my entire life, I'm 74 years old. I've watched all the changes happen in the town. In fact, my mother was one of the opening nurses at Good Samaritan Hospital. My sister worked as an ER nurse in Good Sam. So we watch, I've watched the hospital grow and prosper as it has. But now, things are happening that shouldn't be happening. When Chappie's Funeral Home decided that they wanted to put a signage on Montauk Highway, the town was so great and said to them, sorry, you must comply with the neighborhood and keep your signage with respect to the community. All the other medical offices on Montauk Highway in West Islip have all complied to be respectful to the community. This is what we are asking Good Samaritan now, to be respectful to our community. And thank you all of you for what you do for all of us.
relative to the lighting of the signs as noted by the board. The requirements of the code apply to the signs, we cannot exceed the lighting ordinance and the light signs will comply with the lighting ordinance. Oh, my apologies. Can you hear me now? Okay. So I was saying that the signs will comply with the lighting ordinance. As to the signs looking like Las Vegas, Las Vegas signs are neon, many times they're LED, and they're very large. The ground signs here are not internally illuminated, they are not in any way like Las Vegas signs. They are externally illuminated, meaning they're illuminated by a spotlight. They are basically a plain front with a spotlight on it. The building signs, the two Catholic Health logo signs are twice the size, permitted by code. As to the clips that Mr., that Mr. Brannigan pointed out, are up there. Those clips are adjustable to any size of the sign. The sign is proposed at 32 square feet, they can be shifted to 16 square feet, which is the code compliance sign. They are part of the building structure. When the building was designed, it was designed to have clips in those locations to accept signage in the future. Now, as to the massing of the signs, these are clearly before the board here, these can certainly not be seen from Montauk, they cannot be seen from Union Boulevard, let alone Sunrise Highway. I'm a 40-year resident of, of West Islip, I live on Milligan Lane. I see these, I've seen patient, I've seen the pavilion constructed and the day was done. I drive past it every day. Contrary to some people on the statements that have been made today, I drive on Montauk Highway every night. And every night, I see people driving more than 40 miles an hour. Seen it? They don't, certainly don't turn into the property. Well, no, I wouldn't admit that. But nobody will, nobody turns into the property at 40 miles an hour. That part is true. Every person needs to see the sign to identify where the new emergency room is, because the emergency room right now is on Beach Lane and has been there for many years. I've been in that emergency room, my wife was in that emergency room this July, my son was born in this hospital last November. I was born in this hospital myself. Everything about this hospital is slightly changing because of the patient care pavilion in terms of how it operates, because now the emergency room's in the front, the operating rooms are in the front, the three stories up top are going to be new patient care rooms. And again, to briefly note the traffic study, why it says what it says, the same number of rooms that exist today will essentially exist with regards to beds. The number of beds in the hospital did not change with the modernization. And this is because state standards require that dual patient rooms be transitioned to single patient rooms. So there are, that's what is being done with a lot of the dual patient rooms, they're going to be becoming single patient, and those dual patients would now be moved into the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors of the patient care pavilion in the front of the building. In terms of would it drastically change it, the ground signs, very easy to do. The, the emergency and ambulance signs, harder to do because those signs are prefabricated at those sizes. We'd have to make them specially made to replace those. The ground signs? No, absolutely not. Now, particularly that sign, and we talk about the other signs, the other two which are nine, the other two that are, that are directory signs. And those are directing, they're, they're much smaller and they are directing patients, yes, those signs. Yes, those signs are directing patients on site. Those signs are a little harder to, to shrink. The main signs, certainly we could shrink that. No, no. It's, it's in the package I handed out to the board, in your hand right there. If you go to, I think it's page four. Yes, exactly. He's talking about, the clip would be on, he's talking about here, on this, on the main facade of the patient care pavilion, the corners. That's a rendering, yes. That's Catholic Health logo, yes. The clip would not be shown on that, it's a rendering. Yeah. That is where the clip would be, yes. The clip is what holds the sign on, it's not actually the sign. The clips would, are, would be behind that sign essentially, they would fix it for win purposes, to keep it from being pulled off. Yeah, Jim, you can come up? Yeah, Jim will briefly describe what the clips are. The proposed is, the clips would fix the sign, the clips by the way are, can adjust to the sign to be 16 square feet. So it's not, it's the clips themselves don't mean anything. It's a built-in, correct. Yes. No, they have to be built into it, yes. And it's briefly as to the character of the area, again, a 40-year resident, on Montauk Highway, there is a new medical office building that was immediately across the street from this, it used to be, a lot of this area was residences at one time, it's no longer the case, on Montauk Highway particularly. On 111, there is a fairly large ground sign that just has the name of the, the address of the property as well as a second older ground sign that is a directory sign, it's a pylon directory sign, about, probably about eight, maybe nine feet high. And the rest of the buildings in the area, they also have the ground sign obviously for, not before this board ever, probably St. John's, was probably treated as exempt from the zoning ordinance. But they have a fairly large ground sign as well that is in violation of the code, it's animated, but they're not restricted to the code. Andrew.
I just wanted to see, they're talking about the size of the sign. I don't know where they're from.
Yes. The proposed locations are depicted on the, on the renderings, they're on the corners of what would be the, this would be the west and east facades, towards the corner on the sixth floor, this up here, this is that area. Yes, that's the Catholic Health logo, yes, there's that, that faces east and there's one that faces west, facing. There is a sign on Milligan, that's where the Center Drive is. Yes, sorry. Oh, yes, I understand, yes, correct. So again, the signs are, again, east-west, there's a sign facing north which faces the Milligan intersection, which is where the main hospital sign, sign is, which is the one that's. the main hospital sign, sign is, which is the one that seeks the larger variance, which is what says Catholic Health Good Samaritan University Hospital on. The other sign facing Milligan is the emergency sign, because that is at the center driveway. That is, again, you can clearly see it on the rendering, behind the street trees that are required to be planted by the town, that somewhat obstructed that emergency sign. And again, we're trying to draw everyone now to the center driveway, which is where the patients, emergency patients, are supposed to enter this site, once this property comes opened, and the patient care pavilion is open, I should say, which is anticipated to be either December or January at this time. The other signs, the ground signs are all on Montauk Highway at the three intersections, driveways, I should say. No.
Rich Thompson again, 455 Bay Fourth Street. I just, I wanted to understand the distinction between the ground signs and the signs on the hospital. I think South Side has that big, illuminated words across the front with the entenments. Is Good Samaritan not going to have anything like that? They're just going to have two emblems?
Yes.
Two small emblems?
On the sides, yes. On the front, they will say Good Samaritan Hospital on the front. I'll show.
And what are the... Okay, so it's just two small emblems? That's it. There's nothing else? No words, no illumination?
Right here, that's Catholic Health right there.
That's going to be illuminated or not?
It will be illuminated, yes.
Okay. Okay, it will be illuminated, then. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep. Okay, so what he explained is that the words are going to be illuminated across the face of the building at a, at a significant elevation. And I think that's a concern for the community. I mean, the ground signs, we all understand they have to be ground signs. We think they should be smaller than what's proposed, but generally, I think you're hearing people are opposed to having illuminated signs raised up high on the building to tell everybody that, hey, this is a hospital. Nobody needs to know that from the distance.
I just have one more question. Just one question. I just want to know if the sign's made already? Has the sign made already? That's what I'm hearing, the sign's done already?
No, the ground signs are not made.
No, the big light, the big sign.
A fake sign?
Exactly.
What is the big sign? Thank you. Thank you all. Have a good evening.